I call the March 26, 2019 work session reports from the City Council to order. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Battle.
Here.
Mr. Clark.
Here.
Mr. Glover.
Mrs. Lucas-Burt.
Here.
Mr. Moody.
Here.
Ms. Simmons.
Here.
Mayor Rowe.
Here. Dr. Patton?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of City Council. Tonight, in response to your request, the first presentation will be a review of the Public-Private-Education-and-Infrastructure Act, a process utilized to address the unsolicited proposal for the City of Portsmouth City Hall and Public Safety Building. City Attorney Solomon H. Ashby Jr. will present a review of the process and update on the current status of the PPA process. The second presentation on the other post-employment benefits is a report back from the March 12 presentation and will include a summary of the city's financial obligations to our other post-employment benefits. The last presentation, City Attorney Solomon H. Ashby Jr., will present a brief update on the General Assembly legislation as it pertains to casino gaming in the City of Portsmouth. Attorney Ashby.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of City Council. Tonight, I'm going to review the process by which the city has entertained the unsolicited proposal for a new City Hall. And in this discussion, I'm going to cover some of the milestones as they have occurred thus far and have a bit of a discussion of how we move forward. In this discussion, you will see a number of opportunities where throughout this process, which has been almost a year, how the city has presented the opportunities and how the public has been informed along the way. As you all know, the PPA grants public entities the opportunity and authority to create a public-private partnership for the development of a wide range of projects. In this discussion, of course, we're talking about a proposal for a new City Hall and a Public Safety Building. The first announcement of the PPA before the public was May 22. And at that point in time, Dr. Patton presented this information to council during the work session.
I have one last thing, Mayor, and members of council. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, I am pleased to report that I have received an unsolicited proposal for a new City Hall and Public Safety Building from Ahmata Hoffler. As City Manager, I have accepted the proposal and will proceed in accordance with the Public-Private Education Facilities Infrastructure Act, PPA. During the June 11, 2018, public work session, the city's purchasing administrator will provide a general overview of the PPA Act as adopted in 2002 and amended by City Council in 2010. A notice will be published in the Virginian Pilot tomorrow.
So that was the...
Ashby, so the notice was published?
Yes.
And it's been in the public domain since May 22?
Correct, Mayor.
It wasn't leaked out, it was published?
No, it was published, Mayor. As you...
You're saying, no, it wasn't leaked out?
I mean, no, it was not leaked out, correct. It was published in the public domain on May 23, May 27, and June 3. There was an open bid process through July of 2018. But that wasn't the only notice provided in terms of the written notice. The city did, in fact, come back to City Council in June in the midst of the notice process and provide council further update. And I'll just make note, I believe, last year, May, that would have been the budget process. And so, as you all know, if there's any period of time when council is covered well by the general public and the press, it is, of course, budget season. But even at this June 12 meeting, we had the second piece of information come to the public as well as the council about that particular meeting.
We're going to ask Mr. Michael Ammons if he would be, please, come forward, who's the city's purchasing officer, and he's going to present a overview of the Virginia Public-Private Education Facilities and Infrastructure Act. Mr. Ammons?
Now, we certainly aren't going to go through the entire process. I will just share with you, some of the slides in this presentation tonight are slides that came out of Mr. Ammons' presentation back in June 12 of 2018, when he presented the process for the PPA again, as we were in the midst and the opportunity for bids to come in actually existed. So we're, as I said before, notice went out on the May 23. There were opportunities through July of that month to go forward, and the city moved forward with that process. As the city did, in fact, go forward, there was another opportunity. And let me just give you a little bit of an overview. As you can see from this slide here, and as we've shown in the videos, May 22 and May 23, those processes and notices were provided to the public. The opportunity existed for folks to submit proposals going forward. And so, we moved through that process during that time period. The next opportunity, of course, was on the 26th of November in 2018, where the administration also came back to City Council about another step in the process shortly after the election of some of our newest council members, as you can see in the rear.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, as you are aware, the City of Portsmouth received an unsolicited proposal from Ahmata Hoffler for the construction of a new Portsmouth City Hall and Public Safety Building on property either owned by the city or other entities in May of 2018. The city accepted the proposal, and in accordance with the guidelines of the PPA, provided the opportunity for competing proposals from other interested parties. The city received one additional proposal, which subsequently was withdrawn by the party that submitted it. Tonight, Mr. Michael Ammons, purchasing officer, will provide the rationale for the city manager's request to City Council or internal staff to begin to review and evaluate the accepted proposal. With Mr. Ammons coming forward, on the agenda tomorrow night would be a proposal, would be a resolution in the city manager's report for your consideration.
And so, that was November 26 work session. On November 27, City Council entertained that resolution, Agenda Item 18447.
Which brings us to Item 18447, which is the consideration of a certain resolution. And Madam Clerk, would you read the caption of the resolution, please?
Yes, sir. A resolution directing that an analysis of the proposal received for the construction of a new City Hall and a new Public Safety Building be conducted by city staff.
And so, at that point in time, of course, City Council acted on that particular resolution, putting in place an internal review committee, in large part because of the nature of construction, the solicitation or the utilization of outside engineers or other experts would more than likely involve folks who had ties to folks who were proposed or builders. And so, the city started with its own internal experts in terms of the staff we have with the expertise with regard to engineering and that sort of information, and supplemented, have the opportunity to supplement with outside experts. But the genesis of the evaluation will be internal city employees. And so, from November 26 of 2018, we fast forward to February 26 of 2018, when Dr. Patton announced the public hearing and resolutions as it relates to the negotiation with Ahmata Hoffler. The expert committee, the internal committee, is in those discussions now. And again, the committee is composed of folks with expertise in various fields necessary to ascertain the city's needs in terms of new structures, assessing the city's current structures and their needs. There are folks who are both short-tenured and long-tenured with the city. And that's important because, as council knows, there's been a number of issues and concerns about even placement of a new City Hall. And so, with the folks we have on the internal review committee negotiating this, there are folks who are both familiar with the fact of when the courthouse was here in the waterfront and the discussions in the community about the economic impact of moving the courthouse down the street. So we have folks that certainly have both understandings in terms of the City Hall and government structures as both economic drivers as well as meeting the needs of both pedestrian traffic and citizens who come to city services or city buildings in order to address city services. And so, we fully understand that this decision, a new City Hall and Public Safety Building, would be a process or a decision that would last 20, 30, 40, 50 years in a lifetime of a building or a decision of this magnitude. And so, the PPA provides a couple of opportunities and occasions for public input. Now, I have to say, in order to be clear, there won't necessarily be an opportunity for the public or the City Council to pick the drapes that will go into the new City Hall, but there are opportunities to weigh in in terms of what we do. This discussion here, the opportunities that you've seen, the resolutions that have come before the public, those have been opportunities for folks to chime in at some level in terms of what the issues are. In discussing this and preparing for this discussion this evening, one of the pivot points in terms of a discussion going forward and a review going forward is whether or not council wants to take a look at this process when the financials are developed in terms of what are the costs, expenses, how is the financial deal put together versus how is the structure, say, the design and those sorts of things. Those are certainly two decision points, but they are drastically different in terms of timing. Certainly, we will have a discussion about terms and financials very early on, but as I said before, you won't necessarily get the opportunity to pick the drapes, and the drafting and the design of the building will come much later in the process.
The negotiations is leading to a development agreement that is comprehensive and defines who's going to do what and what the cost is, the location, the size.
Correct.
Is that correct?
And there is an opportunity for interim agreement also. So that's why I say there's two opportunities, but certainly you will have, all of the elements won't necessarily line up at the same time. You could have a good understanding perhaps of the finances but not have a good understanding, a perfect understanding of the final building or how that process goes for.
Love it.
Yes, sir.
So, a project of this magnitude is probably one of the largest undertakings we will participate in in some time. And there's going to be a lot of effort and expense made toward this effort. My concern is that we are using every means possible to inform our citizens and keep them abreast based on what we're able to do in terms of notification. And what, perhaps you don't have the answer for that, but what is the strategy for that? I understand what you said in regards to the PPA requirements, but what is the strategy to make sure we have our citizens involved in the steps that will be taken place to make this happen?
Well, tonight is one of those opportunities, one in a long list from May 22. I will tell you, let me skip here. The PPA Act engraves certain portions of the Public Procurement Act, which is, of course, a state law with a design to address two elements. One, to assure the public that the procurement process is above reproach. I'm going to shorthand it a little bit because I know we've got a number of things to go through tonight. But it provides a process that is public input and designed for public protection but does not necessarily give everyone a hand in the process. The design of the PPA, much like the public procurement process, allows for the presentation of materials at various points in time. The proposal, I believe, has been made available, the initial proposal has been made available at one point in time. It started off with a portion of the proposal being available to the public. I've spoken with Mr. Ammons. I know there were a couple of people who came by to take a look at the proposals over time. Where we are now, the next opportunities are those interim agreements. So that would be a bit of a public airing for council. And then ultimately, like any procurement, when the process is complete, the vast majority of the elements are made available to the public. So that gives you the short answer, and hopefully I've answered your question.
You did. Thank you. Not only am I interested in the public going along every step of the way and the most participation that we can get, as a new council member, I'm kind of apprehensive. Because when we are dealing with our budget, we always talk about the money that we have and that we don't have. And is this something that we've made our, put our best foot forward on? When you say to me that we got a response of one developer...
We did, too.
And when you say that to me, was it something we did, or we're not doing, or we're not putting out enough advertisement? Or is this just enough to wrap the package up? You see what I'm saying? So as a new council member, I'm very, very apprehensive about this process and keeping it nice and slow, or maybe even going back, admitting we made a mistake and we didn't get enough people to get into the process with our advertisement. We didn't make, you see what I'm saying? When you tell me one person and they didn't, they laid a backed out, that doesn't taste good to me and my constituents.
Dr. Patton?
Yes, Councilman Battle, this is a unsolicited, this whole process that Mr. Ashby is explaining, the Public-Private Education Act. City staff, you know, public-private education act does not solicit proposals.
I understand.
Okay.
But whether it was unsolicited or solicited...
It'd be solicited.
Maybe we need to kind of rethink this process and look at it more, which would add the input and the eyes and ears of the new council members rather than putting us up to speed with something that has already seeming to me been kind of rushed through. Not in the reference to time, I mean by in reference to involvement, involvement of all parties involved in the situation. Again, when we talk about our budget, we talk about the lack of what we don't have. And maybe we need to slow up.
Okay.
I think you, as a new councilman, don't know any more or less about this project than the other five of us sitting here. We don't know because we have not yet negotiated what this is. So there's nothing to not know yet. You know what I mean?
Well, I know that the newspaper, the day after we mentioned the project, knew much more than I did.
No, they made a lot of that up. Don't ever believe what you read in the newspaper.
Okay.
So, we're just starting to talk about it.
Maybe we need to get on them about that. We didn't complain?
We've been doing that for 100 years.
We didn't discuss it among one another? We allowed ourselves to get to this point because we didn't say that the Virginia Pilot and Legislature was not telling the truth?
We have followed in this.
We got to get sharper than this.
Good point, Paul. And that message has been said many times before to no avail. It's amazing what doesn't get reported. For example, in February 2017, council made the decision to close Willet Hall. One article came out in 2017 about that. Not one article came out in 2018. For those of you that are there, am I misdating the case?
No.
But I love that, Mr. Mayor.
Well, I hear you. I love that, too. On May 22, you would think that it would be news anywhere, any city, for a developer to come in and say, "I want to build you a new City Hall." The story didn't break until Andy Fox broke it on June 5. They'll figure that one out. And then it gets reported that we leaked this out? That's why I raise that point. I mean, this isn't been in the public domain. What's been articulated is what we articulated as a council last meeting, which was to tell staff and the public that we wanted a process that had full participation from the public. We're just at the starting blocks on this project now. We get a chance to say no at any time in the future, or say turn left or turn right.
But I'm not comfortable with one developer making a proposal, and us, as a city of a 700-plus billion-dollar budget, can only turn to that developer in the process and only have one person backed out.
That ship has sailed. This council's already voted for that.
All right.
Well, that's what I'm trying to do, slow the ship down.
Bills as for form, Bill's got the...
Paul, I think some of your concern is really addressed in the Act itself, the PPA Act. That without that, you would, there would be concerns that whose proposal is getting looked at and who's getting thrown in the ground file. This Act means that it removes any possibility of impropriety or, you know, the system being partial towards a particular developer. So this lays down the ground rules, and it's law. And the procedures are backed by law and they have to be followed.
That's not what I'm saying. I'm saying what we're doing now is going through a procedural situation where the procedure has to be done properly. That's not it. That's not what I'm saying. I'm saying, I've been elected because in the past, with the PPA and all the other partnerships that we get into, the City of Portsmouth is always, and I'm saying always, at the tail end in reference to it not being a quick pro quo with the deal. And that's, I'm here to make sure that this does not continue. And when we bring something like this to the council, I just don't feel easy because it's the start of something that doesn't smell good. Now, I won't go in the past and let you know about all the different deals that we've been behind with the PPA and everybody else. I'm not going to do that because it's a waste of our time. We know that. All I want is the best possible participation, not only from the citizens, from those contractors, as many as we can get, why, to get the best deal for our citizenry. And one contractor and one making the process right and then saying, "Oh, no, we're going. We're not going to do this." I'm just trying to look out for my constituencies.
Paul, your points are good. Your constituents are our constituents. We all represent the same people. We don't represent sections of the city.
No, my constituents are the City of Portsmouth.
That's what you said.
You're saying something else when you say that it's not...
That's not what I said.
We all represent the citizens.
That's what I said.
And that's my citizenry.
I said, your constituents are our constituents. Okay, that's what I said.
Yes, sir.
My question is, have we ever had a PPA before?
We have. I believe the Social Services Building was a PPA. Behavior Health? Social Services Building was a PPA.
It was Social Services.
Social Services.
It was also.
That was good.
Just be it.
Well, let me say it a little better. All public-private partnerships that we've engaged in, we haven't been, we haven't done good jobs. Whether it's PPA, Z-Z-Z, X, whatever it is, we haven't done a good job in the history of our city.
Certainly. Let me posit a couple of things to you about this particular configuration of the internal committee. Because, as I said before, we have short-tenured and long-tenured individuals with various expertise. We certainly have optimistic individuals, and we have folks who are very, what I would call, very astute in terms of making sure this deal happens. We have folks who have had both good experiences and bad experiences, which I will submit to you is the kind of scrutiny you want for any kind of deal. And while it is true, when you get to a project of this magnitude that's being presented, there are not a lot of folks who can chime in. But what you have the opportunity in this process is to scrutinize that deal as we present it and determine if it works for the city. So this is not the end of the process. This is a step along the process. And much like your concerns, Councilman Battle, the reason we go through this process right now and reiterate these points, and your concerns are being voiced publicly, they're being voiced in an arena where the committee can take on those concerns and championing them in terms of making sure that we have the best product, be it individuals out of the legal department as well as the other individuals. And I would just say... And I would just simply submit to you that when you get to projects of a particular size, you do end up with a smaller pool of applicants because of the nature and the dollar involved, as well as schedules. You know, you can have significant, you know, you can have significantly large companies that are otherwise tied up and don't have an interest at that particular time. So that can be an issue also. But I don't, as you saw from the clip of Dr. Patton, the opportunity was laid out in accordance with the law. The reason I put this slide here in particular is because the PPEA and the Public Procurement Act is meant to both protect the public integrity, but it's also meant to limit certain individuals from influencing the process in a way that might lend itself to a question of manipulating public procurement for good services and construction. So it is a balance. It's not perfection. Certainly, folks have different perceptions of what their role is in terms of protecting the public interest. I would submit to you, that's why the law kind of sets out the parameters so that we all are operating on the same standard.
Just to follow, make sure that, that, that the process, as I understand it, with the PPA and the Act, two developers were in the, in the pot, and Ahmaud Arbery-Rose to the top, the other developer backed out. So now we're at the point where Ahmaud Arbery-Rose is the one that we make our deals with on as far as how much our building will be, what kind of construction materials, that was what we do as a council, but at what point does the public get to come in and speak to the mic during public hearing, or during what kind of process do they get to weigh in, or say, "At this location," or "Not here," or "Further inland," or where, does that happen in this process?
Well, certainly to the extent that folks are making those comments, and you are aware of them, like I said this evening, this is the opportunity. When you have an interim agreement, you will have a resolution, and that will come back before council again. Again, that's another public opportunity. When you go forward, if that interim agreement then results in a, what we call a final agreement, again, that has to be approved, and that will be another public opportunity. But the elements of that will come together, and that's what the committee is developing in terms of all of those issues. I will, speaking to your particular point about location, as you all know, the notice provided two particular locations, as well as it had the catch-all phrase, "Any other property that the city owns." The reason we do that is because, of course, one, there's the efficiencies in terms of where do we develop this project, but two, there's a cost every time you try to propose a project in a particular place. And so you have to have some limit on it, otherwise we, we would be sitting around, the expense on anyone's part would be astronomical if we tried to place City Hall or prepare our plan to place City Hall on every piece of property the city owns.
I have a question. First, this was unsolicited. We didn't advertise. It just dropped into our lap.
Certainly.
When it dropped into our lap, it had a location specified. Is that a correct assumption?
Correct.
So from May 22nd, it's, the, the location being proposed has been before us and the public. The question would be, and it's a fair question, is that the right location? No one said, and certainly had a public hearing on this last time, I don't remember anybody saying, "Don't do it there." Am I missing something?
No, that I know of, Mayor.
Again, nothing drops in your lap. That, that's, that's not true. When somebody put in a bid like this, and then we as a city, at that point decide that we want to put a bid out, and at that point, we put the, put the bidding process out, we get one person, they back out, and then we'll start with something that they didn't drop in our lap. They, they persuaded us to move in a certain direction. So all of this smells nefarious.
Well, Paul.
To, to the, to the, just the, the public at large just looking at this.
We have yet to met.
So when I dealt with the procurement process, I don't know whether it changed or not. If we didn't get the amount of participation we wanted, we're going to go longer than 30 days. But when you close something up in 30 days, the first thing the public's going to say, "My God, so what, this is a neat little package." I just want to be cautious here and...
Well, put something forward.
Voice my opinion.
Okay. What do you want us to do? What would you want us to do? Put something on the table that we can talk about.
With the parameters that we just discussed, what should we do? You're the mayor. What, what should we do? What, all of us, what did we think we should do? Have we rushed in this thing, or do we need to put it back out for bid? What should we do?
Okay.
You're asking the questions. What should we do?
Well, get me up to the next meeting, and I'll make some type of proposal for us.
Anybody want to respond?
This council already took a unanimous vote to go forward with this project.
And this is what...
And we speak in one voice.
And you hear what you're just saying? And when we took this vote, I said that this does not mean that we're going. But yes, we were unanimous. But now you're saying, "We did it, and we're going forward." See, I don't want to make that same mistake. That's why I'm at this point. And by being new, yes, you, yes, you could push me to the first point.
Okay. Paul, are you asking us to pause this?
Yes, please.
Okay, well, let's get a consensus on that. All right. The question that Paul's put on the table is whether or not we should pause where we are and stop this particular process. So let's start, and we'll start with Shannon.
I think based on the information what I've reviewed, I think I'm comfortable with moving forward.
Okay.
Moving forward.
Move forward.
Move forward.
Move forward.
Paul.
I've done my best, Mr. Mayor.
And the goal is, is to get the best deal with the greatest amount of public participation? Is that not correct?
Yes.
Yes.
I agree.
But we didn't have that.
It wasn't required at that point.
Because of our...
But there you are.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. And so as the committee moves forward in terms of addressing any of a number of elements going forward, we will come back to you in a future meeting to discuss negotiated points and give you all a more comprehensive picture of where the negotiations are as we move along in this process. Certainly, we will provide you some updates, or if there are positive questions that need to be addressed, those will certainly be addressed internally first, and then, as I said before, we'll bring you all those opportunities for the public to see where we are in the process and determine how the council wants to move forward.
Any questions?
Yes.
Comments?
Thank you.
Okay.
Yes, this is good.
My presentation tonight, which can be better described as a summary of two of our other post-employment benefits from last week's public work session, is what we're going to speak about. Pretty much in summary, I would say in addition to our retiree health insurance and our spouse health insurance that we offer to our retirees who participate in our HR plan, that would be the spouses of those retirees who are less than 65. We currently, as we talked about last week, we currently offer our retirement allowance, which is a $200 monthly allowance to our retirees who are under the age of 65. As discussed in some of our previous presentations from the public work session, for fiscal year 2019, the city's annual contribution or expenses, that would have been $570,000.
And that goes away after they turn 65?
Yes, sir. In addition to that, we also offer a health reimbursement account. We offer that for our retirees who were on, at one point in time, for all members of council, at one point in time, we offered retiree health insurance for retirees both under 65 and also above the age of 65. I believe back in 2015, we actually decided to transition and get away from offering retiree health benefits, those retirees over the age of 65. We replace it with a health reimbursement account. These retirees, approximately about 285 of them, they actually receive a contribution at the beginning of the plan year, which runs January 1st through December 31st. They actually get $1,400 annually, that they can use that to help pay offset expenses as it relates to any claims or any premiums if they do what we refer to as a Medicare supplement or a Medicare gap program. Those are basically just programs that kind of fill the gap between what you're going to get from your Part A and your Part B Medicare. Most of the retirees over 65 typically use that in addition to, as I mentioned before, our Part D benefit that, it's still around, but you don't hear too much about it, that really provides them with prescription drug benefits in that regard.
And how much is that per person?
$1,400 annually, sir.
Mayor, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, as you're aware, when we met last month, we called to your attention how we were working or going to work to try to increase our funding of our supplemental, Portsmouth Supplemental Retirement Fund and our Portsmouth Fire and Police Retirement System to ensure its long-term viability. We had our actuary able to come out of Boston and to present. These are two areas, which is the retirement allowance of the $2,400 a year that is before you to consider whether or not you want to discontinue it, reduce it. Whatever your decision is, that money that is realized will go into the Supplemental Retirement Fund payment that will help to continue to give longevity to the council. I think first, if you all want to discuss the retirement allowance, and then we'll go to the HRA.
So you gave us three options. One is continue it, one is to reduce it, and one is to eliminate it. Can you eliminate it over time? Can you ramp it down, so to speak?
The retirement allowance?
The health reimbursement.
We hadn't got to the health reimbursement yet. I'm talking about the retirement allowance.
Okay, I was thinking HRA. I apologize.
Right, just the retirement allowance. That's the 2,400 that, she gave the number of employees that received that a year, and that has been in effect since, go back in the...
I believe 1973, 1975, around about that time. Initially, when it was offered, it was $100, and then it got increased to $200.
In, in the 90s, it got increased to the 200.
That's only for people within our two closed systems?
Yes, yes, sir.
Yeah.
Yes.
Are you asking for, what's the thinking of council?
Yes, that's what we'd like to, that's what we said we were going to come back to you all with.
All right. How do you all feel about this?
Why do we need to change it at all? I mean, is this the recommendation from the actuary, or really from out of Boston, for us to save money on the other end?
I believe it was, we're pretty much trying to provide some options as it was previously discussed, that our retirement contributions that we're going to need to make continuously into our closed retirement systems, the fire and police, and the Portsmouth Supplemental Retirement System, we were looking to use additional dollars to help offset that increase that is upcoming to keep our fund soluble, for lack of a better word.
Well, I know we're talking about the $200 now, but the HRA, when we're talking about savings, you know, it's interesting when we talk about, you know, contributions, we always talk about it's in perpetuity going forward, but the savings can be also ongoing. And when the retirees came out of the, the city's health system, that, that liability was, was pretty substantial, that they saved the city. I forget the exact amount, but I think it was above $500,000.
It was in millions.
It was in a million. So you're talking about our OPEB liability?
My point is that, that's not a one-time savings. That, that goes on as reoccurring savings. And instead of, you know, doing away with the $2,400, I'm asking tonight, and Mayor, I'd like to have a consensus for this, that we give the, the public safety folks, the widows and the widowers, $100 per month, increase effective July the 1st of 2019. And, you know, I know the city manager addressed poverty, how the city's putting forth money to lift the boats for those that are earnings are at or below the poverty level in this city. But we got retirees that, that when they retired, through no fault of their own, things were a whole lot different then. Salaries were extremely low. And in the case of the public safety, especially firefighters, a lot of them had to go out and buy their own gear, their turnout gear, at, at that point in time. You know, nowadays, that's unheard of. Also, we all have gotten information about the incidence of cancer due to the conditions that they worked under at that point in time. And so I'm asking, Mayor, I'd like to have a consensus that we, we do the right thing by these folks and give them $100 per month.
Is that the letter that...
Yes.
Okay.
Everybody's got a letter in front of them.
We've got two questions before, so a question asked by the city manager, and then a question proposed by Bill. Can we take them one at a time?
I have two. I have two questions.
Well, yours, your two is what to do with the retirement allowance and what to do with it.
And then I was going to speak, I was going to speak to the health reimbursement account.
Why don't you speak, so we can get it all...
Okay. With the health reimbursement account, there are options our staff recommends for City Council consideration. To continue the plan as stated, reduce the annual contribution over a three- to five-year period, or terminate the plan effective at the end of the plan year, December 31, 2019.
It's the same.
All right. Any questions of the city manager? Okay, we have actually three questions. What to do with retirement allowance, what to do with the health reimbursement account, and what to do with Bill's question that he's proposed. Let's take, let's take them in that order, retirement allowance.
Can we refresh me on what, that $1,200 for retiree?
HRA.
14.
It's 14, huh?
It's 1,400 for the, for the HR, sorry.
No, 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 I'm sorry. I'm sorry about Bill's...
$100.
$100 a month.
That's $100 a month to widows, widowers of public safety.
You only talking about widows and widowers? You're not talking about the actual employees?
I'm talking about retirees, widows, widowers.
Everybody?
Yeah. In fact, there's a sheet in front of you.
I know, but I'm just trying to...
Yes.
Okay, so...
Yes.
So is that the some million-dollar figure that you showed us? I'll let me stand and speak.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, just from a logistical standpoint, your retirement system is set up on a percentage growth. That's why last month, the actuary spoke about percentages. I think I've had a conversation with at least one council member. The difficulty, there is no mechanism to do $100. And when you address... And when you address this by a percentage across the board for retirees, you're going to have some ripple effects in terms of your liabilities. But I just want to make sure, when in the past, we've talked about supplements, and, you know, keeping in mind the discussion we had last month, that doing a hundred dollars, there's a way to accomplish that? When you're talking about within the system, you're talking a percentage, and there is no particular way to get a hundred dollars to one or the other.
The percentage, I'm sure our CFO has the ability to convert that as close as possible to a percentage of increase.
Well, that will have, and this was my comment to council member, that will have, in some respects, not a progressive effect, because your former fire chiefs will get a percentage of their salary while you're.
But that can be converted to whatever that percentage takes to equate to a hundred dollars.
I think what attorney's saying is.
I know what he's saying.
Right, and I, you know, and I agree, the point where you're trying to get the hundred dollars across the board, because that's the fairest way, because somebody hired, left at a high salary, if you convert it to a percentage, the people that you're trying to help, their poverty won't get as much, and they'll benefit more. So that was the point of the dollar amount, as opposed to the percentage. And we, believe me, it is possible to do a dollar amount, whatever that percentage is.
Can we take this in a methodical way? It would make sense to me, it seems like what you want to do is take whatever, if we reduce, I'm going to pick on the HRA, let's say that we reduce it by half, instead of seven, fourteen-hundred, seven-hundred, you would take that seven-hundred and put it into the retirement fund.
Contribution, yes.
Right, okay.
To help contribute additional money.
I think it would be helpful to lay this out in writing and send it out, so that we can look at it and digest it. Speak to, speak to Bill's point about, can you convert it to a percent? How much was, does this proposal cost? What impact does it have on the retirement fund? To me, it would help me to get that information.
Well, it'd definitely help to get information out, you know, when that, because that's a different issue with dollar amounts, but to me, these two issues here are very clear. These, you know, were the benefits that were given, another thing is, like the first one, retirement allowance, that ends when they're sixty-five. But if they are under the city healthcare, when they turn sixty-five, they would stop getting that, and they would quit being on the healthcare. So when somebody met that age, there would be a lot of savings to the city, because no matter what, when you turn sixty-five, you're not allowed to participate with the health insurance through the city.
Yeah, and that's a good point. And if you were to twist my arm and say, which one do you prefer tonight? I would say, prefer doing something with an HRA and ramping it down, as opposed to the first one, because of the promise that was made at the time of employment that you'll get this, and I think that you have to.
And the cost of insurance is so much higher before you're sixty-five.
Yeah.
No matter where you're getting it.
But I think there was a consensus that we asked the city manager to break this down, give us what the alternatives are, and get the cost for Bill's proposal. And we'll put it on the session for the next council meeting.
Yeah, that's helpful.
Is that an agreement?
Along with the cost, how to implement the, a hundred dollars, to Nathan's point, don't want to do a percentage where somebody retired at, you know, say eighty-thousand dollars, that, their percentage could be much more than your average firefighter or police officer.
Yeah, I saw a note from everybody, didn't see Paul. Are you comfortable with that, asking that information on the city manager?
Yes.
And I would just add, I mean, when I sat down with Attorney Ashby, being a liaison to the retirement board, perhaps it may be beneficial for all of us also to sit down as a group to understand exactly what the funding is, what the liability is, because I think, I had questions, and I assumed that if I had questions, others that are similarly situated may have had questions too. And I think it's important, as we talk through these guiding principles and these things that impact our citizens, that we understand what we're doing in terms of the decision-making process. But also, once we understand, it can, it can enable us to be and speak with one voice.
I think John Hancock did a pretty darn good job.
He's saying John Hancock just standing last month.
That presentation was about as good as you can get.
But there still seems to be questions. All I'm, all I'm suggesting is, is that we all maybe confer and understand exactly what is at stake. Because as we just listened, there are still questions.
What do you want explained? What do you want explained?
Oh, I, I pretty much understand. Oh, you understand it all?
If they give it to us like they have.
No, sorry.
I think the request is that if we have it in writing, because the understanding is that we're trying to realize some cost savings someplace between these two, and if these are for, both for retiring persons at age sixty-five, at what rate are we retiring people off, moving people off? At what rate are the people reaching age sixty-five and the money is being saved anyway? So I have my answer, but if we get something in writing, then, you know.
I think that's what the mayor suggested, that the city manager get back, show us some writing, that it is.
Mayor, I was, I'm just sitting here thinking, and there have been two sessions when we brought the actuary in. We came to you all before we brought the actuary in to share with you all what we were facing as it pertained to the retirement fund. Two-hundred-and-twenty-five million we have, we're paying out thirty million, and what's the life of the fund if we continue in this direction? And it's averaging out ten years, whereas the actual actuarial shows people who are in this, who are in those two retirement systems now, and the forty who will eventually go in who are active, we're looking for this fund to go out to twenty, almost ninety-one. So we have got to do what it takes to make sure there's money to go out to twenty-ninety-one. And right now, we're looking at, we're paying thirty million plus out, we're bringing in twenty million, and we're going to continue to pay thirty million and more out, but we've got to decide what's going to happen if we don't boost this to keep it out to the year that the last person in the system expires.
Chad.
And the last question I have, I believe, if my recollection is correct, we did discuss looking into, I guess the state has a larger fund?
The state has a pool fund for OPEB that the OPEB benefits are into.
Okay.
And we're in there.
And that, that is, that is where we contribute our OPEB expense or allotment into for that benefit. So that's a larger pool that is not available for our retirement system.
Did you all check that?
Yes.
Okay, very good, thank you.
All right, so the city manager's going to get back to us, and we'll have it on the next session. Yes, sir.
If we're losing money with the retirement system, is it just because there's so many people? Is this something that just started? Or is this something that has been going on for a while? If it's an investment situation, and we are not getting the yield to maintain the thirty million, maybe we need to think about getting a new investor?
Well, it's never been fully funded, that's the problem. It got as low as twenty-eight percent, thirty-two percent, which is nearly bankrupt. So it's, it's a problem that we've inherited, Paul.
But if we're needing thirty million, and the only thing we can get is twenty million a year with our investments, at some point, we were getting thirty million. Again, maybe we need to look at another investor.
I don't think that we've ever gotten thirty million.
Yeah, we're paying out.
It might be useful to have the investment manager brief council sometime in the future.
In the future, yeah.
I think with some changes, they have more flexibility now than they did in the past, so that helps them take advantage of the ups in the market.
What we heard last council meeting was that the market on the whole in 2018 was bad, down five percent on the average. We actually made money, we beat the market, but we didn't meet our goal. Our goal is seven and a quarter.
We met our goal some in the past, but it seems as if we are not being as consistent as we need to be. So when, if that's the case, we really need to look at a different investor, a different type, and things like that.
Your point is very well taken. At twenty-eight percent funding, though, you'd have to have unbelievable returns in order to get a goal. That's the problem, we're not, our corpus is not big enough. But I think, do we have a direction that we've asked the city manager to get back on these alternatives, and to schedule in the future a briefing by the investment?
I have that down, we'll get with the retirement board.
Years ago, we were about seventy-seven percent solvent. With good investments during that time, we could get a pretty good spark now. When we bought the funds to make the program solvent a few years ago.
All right.
All right, that completes the presentation. No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, he has one more casinos.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, I want to take this opportunity to speak about the most recent news as it relates to the casino legislation. As you may know, Senate Bill eleven-twenty-six, sponsored by Senator Louise Lucas, has been executed by the governor, permitting the Joint Legislative and Audit Review Committee to do a study, first and foremost, on the viability of gaming throughout the Commonwealth of Virginia. As part of that bill, it allows us to move forward, and gaming, casino gaming remains on track, no pun intended. We have now the opportunity, as the state takes up the study, they will evaluate gaming throughout the Commonwealth, the taxation schemes, the opportunities in the city of Portsmouth, and the development that we have proposed here in the city. And so with that, as the senator dips her head in, we certainly want to applaud the governor on moving this forward, so that we can certainly take up this issue as we go forward and, and further develop and consult with individuals to bring forward the development here in the city of Portsmouth. I just wanted to make you all aware of that, this process is going to be ongoing, we'll certainly have some milestones we need to hit in the next legislative session, but city staff, economic development is moving forward with regard to casino gaming and its opportunities for development here in the city of Portsmouth. Any questions?
Any questions?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, you have seven items that are on your city manager's report tonight. The first is the Family Partnership Meeting Incentive Fund. Adoption of an ordinance accepting funding from the Department of Social Services in the amount of one-thousand-eight-hundred dollars, and appropriating said amount in the FY 2019 Social Services Fund for the Family Partnership Meeting Incentive Program. The next is the Neighborhood Incentive Fund, the Neighborhood Incentive Grant for Port North of Wilson Ward and Shea Terrace Civic Leagues. Adoption of an ordinance accepting funds from the Port North of Wilson Ward and Shea Terrace Civic Leagues in the amount of three-thousand-eighty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents, and appropriating said amount in the FY 2019 General Fund for use by the Department of Parks, Recreation, and Leisure Services in the Neighborhood Incentive Grant Program. Adoption, the next is a FY 2019 Notice of Award for Virginia State Opioid Response, SOR Prevention Award. Adoption of an ordinance accepting an opioid response prevention award in the amount of fifteen thousand from the Virginia Office of Behavioral Health Wellness and appropriation said funds in the FY 2019 Behavioral Healthcare Services Fund for use by the Department of VHS to address opioid misuse. The next is an unappropriating of a hundred-and-twenty-six-thousand-nine-hundred-and-eight dollars from the FY 2019 PPS Grant Fund. This is an adoption of an ordinance to amend ordinance twenty-eighteen-dash-ninety-five to rescind the adoption, the appropriation of a hundred-and-twenty-six-thousand-nine-hundred-and-eight dollars from the FY 2019 Portsmouth Public Schools Grant Fund. The next is an adoption of a resolution approving the twenty-nineteen edition of the Emergency Operation Plan for the city of Portsmouth, and you all have received copies of that plan at the last meeting. The Economic Development Access Road Project for the former BASF site area. It's adoption of a resolution authorizing and supporting submission of an application for participation in the Virginia Department of Transportation Economic Development Access Program. To give you some background, the Economic Development Access Program provides funding to create adequate roadway access for potential economic development sites. Adequate access may require the construction of a new roadway, improvement of an existing roadway, or both to serve the designated site. Council previously authorized submission of an application for participation in this program for the area of the BASF site by Resolution R- eighteen-dash-sixteen, adopted on July twenty-fourth, twenty-eighteen. However, VDOC subsequently modified the program guidelines to require additional verbiage in application resolutions, including language specifying acknowledging that local match funding is required, and language regarding a locality's intent to add any new roads to the local system for the purpose of receiving annual VDOC maintenance funds. The financial impact, the estimated project will cost one-million-nine-hundred-and-thirty dollars. The maximum state allocation within the fiscal year is five-hundred-thousand dollars unmatched, and additional a hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in state funds may be allocated with matching local funds. The city of Portsmouth will be requesting six-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, and the city team may apply for additional funds through other grant programs. The last is the conveyance of one-four-six One Street. Adoption of a resolution declaring a certain city-owned property having a size of approximately five-hundredth of an acre, and, and an address of one-four-six One Street, tax parcel zero-zero-five-two-dash-oh-five-nine-oh, to be surplus real property and authorizing the conveyance of the same to Brandon, yep, John. Those concludes this session.
Staying with the agenda, we have two special presentations. One is the continuance of the recognition of the foster parents, families, and you'll ask the, I'll call on you, and you'll ask the Director of Social Services to come.
Yes, Mrs. Littlefield.
And then the recognition of Delta Day, and my understanding, you keep them without provision, I'll invite Lisa Rogers, who's the president, come to the lectern, so that we can recognize the Deltas. We have a public hearing, which has been advertised. We have the consent agenda, which has a ordinance and a resolution. Because it's a consent agenda, we can handle this with one motion to approve both, is that correct, Mr. City Attorney?
That's correct, ma'am.
Okay. Anybody want to separate them? Okay, all right.
Then I have two items to report back. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of your council, members of council, you have two items in the box. One is the public. One is the Public Utilities Water Sewer and Sewer Disposal Disconnection of Service. This report is a response to your March 11 request of the city manager and city attorney to examine the city code sections regarding water cutoffs as it pertains to disconnection of water services for non-payment. The second is a primer on how to read a municipal budget. It's also in the box in preparation for the FY 2020 Budget Review Meetings that are beginning to be scheduled for next week, which is the off-week of city council. And you have not only the off-week between the ninth, the eighth and the ninth meeting, but that additional week would be weeks that council will come in, and the budget team will review all aspects of the budget with you. In the past, council grouped in twos, because it's about an hour and a half or so meeting. Mrs. Simmons and Mr. Moody with team on the Wednesday, which is usually the day that Mr. Moody has his meeting. And Mr. Clark and Mrs. Vice Mayor Lucas Burke team on the Thursday, which is her meeting. But sometimes if Mr. Clark's Friday was not available on Thursday, they would do the Friday. And then with our newest council members, Mr. Councilman Glover and Councilman Battle, if it is in concurrence with you, we will schedule you all together. That will go out to you all next week, I mean, this week, so you'll know for next week.
Council ladies, I'll report, so we'll start with Shannon.
Yes, last Thursday evening, we had the Park and Authority Meeting. One of the things we were discussing was talking about the reconstruction of the county street garage, but some of that's been kind of put on hold because that property is also being talked about in Nun's List proposal. We've had one member resign since our last meeting, and we have another member that we're going to have to look at the attendance record. So we're definitely going to be looking for one more to join, and possibly two more for the board, that's it.
Yes, let's see, Planning Commission is still in need of a commissioner. They are down one commissioner, so they did inquire about when that may occur. PRHA Commissioners passed two resolutions. One is going to be some new flooring putting at the Phoebus Square facility. It's going to be with Continental Flooring through an RFP bid. The other resolution is going to allow them to execute a contract for financial advisor services with Herrera Associates. And just to let you know, the Seaboard Commons Development is on track, and you should be hearing more information on that soon.
Thank you.
May I ask a question, Vice Mayor? For the vacancy on the Planning Commission? I have someone I would like to submit, do I submit that through?
The planning, the Personnel Committee, which is the mayor and Councilman Moody.
Attended the March 19 meeting of the Historic Preservation Commission. They had a roof application and window replacement application. Also attended the March 12 closed meeting of the PPEIC. And of course, today, we had a tour of the shipyard. I'll call it the Portsmouth Shipyard. And it was quite enlightening. You might want to elaborate a little more on that, Mayor. I thought it was a good opportunity.
What the PPEIC would like to do with the Navy, they met with Admiral Rock, who is the Navy's commander for all the facilities on Mid-Atlantic. The surplus, the shipyard has property that's not being utilized, has been utilized for several decades. And that's what they call the South Gate, which is south of the Jordan Bridge. There are A through F finger piers that jut out into the southern branch of the Elizabeth River. And so they were working with us to see if there could be some type of use that would be mutually beneficial to them and to the city.
I attended the Community Service Board's meeting, and one of the changes that they've made to operate batteries, substance abusers who usually would, in the past, would come in, would always complain or leave prematurely because of the intake system. They've narrowed it down to five minutes for the intake system, and they're trying to, at this point, develop a blast out that will let those folk in need know that it has been developed a better intake system, and see if they can get them in there. The Historical Association, I attended their meeting. They're going to have a contest with the citizens of Portsmouth. It'll be done online, will deal with history of the state of Portsmouth's history. And they're going to gift out prizes to the winners. So we're real excited. At the next meeting, we'll get the parameters of the dates. I went to, what's it, Department of Social Services, I think it was. And they've expanded their services, and they put an emphasis on family self-sufficiency. And they are real proud of the participation and the development of the citizens in that program.
Y'all gave my report, I did.
We have a need for a closed session, is there a motion? It's got to be read.
I'll move, I'll read the motion. Yes, yes, I have it. I move to go into closed session. A pursuant to Virginia Code subsection 2.2-3711, A dot three for the purpose of discussing the acquisition and disposition of real property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body, specifically regarding the Victory Crossing Area. And B pursuant to Virginia Code subsection 2.2-3711, A dot three for the purpose of discussing the disposition of publicly held or controlled real property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body, specifically regarding Crawford Bay. And C pursuant to Virginia Code subsection 2.2-3711, A dot one for the purpose of discussing or considering the performance of city council appointees. And Virginia Code subsection 2.2-3711, A dot eight for the purpose of consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters, requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel. And D pursuant to Virginia Code subsection 2.2-3711, A dot eight for the purpose of consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by the public body regarding specific legal matters, requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel, specifically regarding the city attorney's regular report to city council on the activities of his office, including pending litigation and potential litigation.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion?
I will be recusing myself on item A, so I don't know what order we want to take them in.
Well, let's take it A, we'll do A first.
Then I'll go back out, okay.
So, thank you for that. And you're recusing because of a potential...
Family ownership in this development.
And you'll note that the fact that she did not participate in that portion?
Yes, sir.
Will you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir.
Motion is to approve the motion.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Glover?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Mrs. Simmons?
Yes.
Mayor Rowe?
Yes, we're in closed session. Those that are not...